Tawnytown Planning and Zoning Commission, please come to order. Will we stand for the pledge, please? George, would you lead us?
Yeah. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
Let the minutes reflect the members that's present. The commission members should have received the draft minutes for May 22, 2017. Is there any corrections or additions to those minutes?
I have none.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for exception.
They can approve the minutes for May 22, 2017.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, it's unanimous, thank you. Delegation in action items. Presentation of concept site plan for Tan York Street for the Georges. Bid and breakfast request for concept approval. And Jim, you want to lead us off, please?
Sure. Basically, we're taking another look at the drawing that we talked about last month with the request for the site plan waiver. I know that the Tillmans, the developers, have located an engineer who's working on the plans right now, but as we speak, we're still looking at the concept that we had before us last month. Unfortunately, because it was on for a waiver, it wasn't advertised as a concept plan presentation or on the agenda for concept approval. So essentially, we're here tonight to formalize, I think, what consensus was provided for last month, which is that the concept idea is good and they can go ahead and develop it into a full-fledged site plan.
Okay. Let's start out with, I'll entertain a motion. Sustained, okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the concept site plan.
There a second?
I'll second.
Open for discussion. Any comments from anyone, or any comments from the floor, or any additional, or anything else?
If you have any questions, you're happy to answer them.
Okay, I guess the only question I would have is the stop work order. Where does that fall between the residence and the bid and breakfast?
The stop work order.
Come to, and, to our mic, please.
Yes.
State your name and...
Chris Tillman with Georges on York Bed and Breakfast. The stop work order is a technical issue about the permit because the property transfer has not fully taken place at the state level. The Estat website still lists George Baumgartner as the owner of the property. Our understanding is that that was held up by a $15 water bill here at the town that I paid a week and a half ago. We found that out when I came in to talk to Jim about the zoning certificates, when I found out about it. So I paid the bill right away, and we're just waiting for the paperwork to catch up. As soon as it does, we're back to work.
Okay. Can you do something, clarification on the difference between residence and the bed and breakfast?
The building permit is actually under residential. And because the B&amp;B is going to be limited to five rooms, and the owners will be living there, it is considered, in terms of building code, it is considered a residential project. So the building permit, you know, can be issued because it's basically remodeling your house. It is essentially what the building permit stuff is. I mean, it's a very substantial remodel, but essentially, from a building code perspective, that's how it's looked at, is not commercial.
So, there's no part of this where it becomes commercial then, right? The whole renovation is residential with the sprinklers, the...
Right.
Then that leads me back to the process that we're going through.
Right. Nothing can change exterior-wise until the site plan is through.
So, okay, so your permit is dealing with interior?
Yes, sir, that's correct. The permit is only for the interior renovations. It has nothing to do with the exterior work.
So no driveway apron off riffles, no parking area, none of that, until the site plan is through, is done.
Anyone else have any comments? Okay, motion was made and seconded for approval for the concept plan. All those in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. It's approved with the...
One abstain.
One sustain of Mr. Glass.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, presentation for our electronic message display board sign at the Tawnytown Baptist Church, 4150 Sales Mill Room, request for approval. Jim, you want to start us out again?
Sure. As you know, electronic message boards require Planning Commission approval, so that there's a public process should anybody around it be interested. The project will reuse the existing case that's already on the site. It looks like it's going to be repainted, cleaned up, and refurbished. Essentially, there's going to be a new panel in for Tawnytown Baptist Church and where the movable letters are now is going to be replaced with the electronic message board. So in terms of the size of the sign, it will be considered existing, so, and same with location, because they're reusing the existing case. That way, they could avoid any issues related to the location or the square footage or anything like that, because it's really just an update of an existing sign.
Okay, and the, our standard requirement is, what, 46 square feet? With our decision, we can increase that, is that correct?
That, you can, right, you can adjust the size based on the site, but again, in this case, because it's an existing sign that they're just retrofitting, there's no need to expand permitted sign, you know, size or anything like that, because it's existing.
Okay.
So really, the issue before you is just, can they do a message board or not?
Okay.
We've got some representatives here for the project, if there are any questions.
I'll entertain a motion first.
I'll make a motion that the, we approve the plan for a message display board at the Tawnytown Baptist Church.
Electronic message display board.
Yeah, electronic message.
Mr. Glass seconded. Open for discussion. Anyone, representatives, any comments, or maybe in this case, less said, better off we are?
(laughing). It's all your questions, you have.
Okay, hearing no questions, all those in favor of motion for approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Unanimous. Thank you.
You know, when we were talking about electronic message display boards, that was one place that I thought would definitely do one. It was the perfect spot to have it.
You get a lot of traffic off that aisle.
Yep.
Okay, ordinances and agreements, none. Jim, your report, give me a second.
Let's see, we already talked about the Georges and the Baptist Church signs, so we've been talking a lot about the downtown business district and amending the code to allow outdoor activities. Following last month's meeting, where there seemed to be, where there was positive response to the, you know, description that was in last month's report, Jay and I sat down and took a look at it, and we've got a draft. This has not been introduced yet, that's why it's not under ordinances.
Okay.
But, you know, we do have that draft language in there, and essentially, it just goes with what I had talked about last month in my report, limiting the area of display rather than trying to talk about what could or what couldn't go out there. So it's very, it enables the outdoor displays, it limits them to 60% of the storefront linear footage and to a depth of four feet from the side of the building. And it also requires a minimum passage area of six feet, so that we're not creating pinch points where somebody has to, you don't want to have people, you know, going down the sidewalk and having to suddenly go single file because somebody's got so much stuff out on the sidewalk. So while that certainly exceeds ADA requirements, I think it meets the intent of not cluttering, you know, not creating a flea market appearance for the downtown. So again, limiting the area that they could use for display, we thought was the best approach. And we did speak a little to Outdoor Food Service, just in the event that somebody does follow through with, you know, some initial interest that we've had, and this isn't specifically for necessarily putting tables out on the sidewalk. This could be a site that might have a rear yard or a rear patio that they might want to put, you know, have food service provided at. So with the food service, it would require them to have a sketch plan, kind of like we have for the bed and breakfast, you know, it could be something hand-drawn that would come before you for approval. That way, there would be, you know, a public vetting of it, so in the event that a neighbor had an issue with, you know, somebody serving food next door for a restaurant or whatever, they would have an opportunity to speak to that. So the ordinance is very, very simple, straightforward changes. Certainly, there is risk with it, that, you know, you're not controlling how something looks, which really zoning isn't about how it looks. I know a lot of times, we would like it to be, but, so there is risk that somebody is, you know, within that 60% and four feet deep. I'm sure that we will have somebody who will put out a bunch of junk that doesn't look good, and we get complaints about it, but I think that's the risk that you run by allowing the outdoor displays, is, you know, you can't legislate someone's taste, I guess. So, you know, the person with a, you know, certain level of merchandise may think that's, you know, looks great, and, you know, I may not think it looks great, but you really can't speak to that in zoning, so.
Brad, you brought this up originally. How does it fit into what your original thoughts were? I think the only thing that gets me here a little bit is the 60% of the front wall. Now, does that include just the basic front, or if they have steps and a stairwell coming down, is that, how do you, how do you go determine a 60%?
It's gonna, frankly, it'll be best reasonable, you know, measurement. And we'll use rust across the street as an example. The storefront occupies, you know, probably all but that little stairway area, so, you know, if it came down to looking like they were getting a little out of hand, I would have to go kind of take a look inside and see where the wall for the store is compared to the stairs, and kind of go from that, you know, if it came down to it, I could go out with a measuring tape. I hope it doesn't come down to that, but it may for some locations. But the idea would be, you know, to not completely line the street with merchandise, you know, to still, to limit it, and, you know, a smaller space will, a smaller storefront will have a smaller amount of merchandise that they can put out, and, you know, just like any other, I guess, location-based criteria, you know, same thing, if you've got a big storefront, you can have a bigger sign, you know, according to our ordinances. Downtown, it really doesn't play out too much, because nobody's really pushing the envelope for wall signs or anything like that, but, you know, it kind of is in sync with other codes that we have, you know, in particular with signage, where, you know, if you have a big site, you get more signage, you know, if you have a big site, you get more, you know, linear footage to display your merchandise. And I think it's probably the most reasonable, easiest-to-enforce way to do this.
You can extend it four feet out into sidewalk from the building.
As long as they still leave six feet of sidewalk.
Right, six feet.
Right, so if you don't have 10 feet of sidewalk, you can't do four feet, you know, if you only have six feet of sidewalk, you're out of luck.
All right.
My only, or my suggestions would be, we need to specify time restraints on this. Instead of having things out all night, or whether they can only have it out during their business hours seems appropriate. I know Russ sometimes has larger objects out all the time.
Well, he lets it out all.
Right. But then you have other places where they just have little trinkets out there, and I don't think it should be out all night. There should be something about perishables being out there. I know we talk about food service, but what's to stop from just displaying cupcakes outside across the street, or eggs, or anything like that? There really should be talk about what can actually be displayed. I don't think you can display food. Food service implies that they're serving and eating the food.
What if they're giving it for free? You still, same thing?
Well, at that point, yeah, you're serving food. If it's being eaten there, that would be food service, but we can't...
No, I think that's a good point, that, you know, we could probably add some verbiage in there, you know, outdoor displays may not include consumables or something like that.
Right, perishables, consumables, things like that. I know there was talk once of someone had eggs in front of their store, and that created a problem.
How about if they're not real?
When it's not food.
Right.
It's not perishable if it's not real.
Well, it's got to look real.
Oh, they were real, okay. Let me get a comment here from the floor.
Chris Tillman again. Do you think, one, on the perishable item, doesn't that, wouldn't that be handled by the Health Department if there was an issue of that kind of thing? Would there not be a Health Department jurisdiction on that?
In theory.
I get your point.
If we want to bring them in from the county.
Right.
Most time, this would be on a weekend, and you were not going to get the Health Department visitors, especially, Joe.
My second question is, you were talking about not, about displays, not wanting displays to be out every night. A question from our end is if, you know, if we had large planters that were out by our stoop, you know, that might be so big, they're certainly not something we want to be dragging in every night. Would that be something that's covered under the ordinance?
Ready for sale?
No.
No, then it wouldn't be.
Then that wouldn't be, I wouldn't...
This is for merchandise that's intended for sale.
Right. Well, and which kind of goes back to the question about rust, because although some of those things may be merchandise for sale, it is also, in extent, part of their decor and their bar, as it were.
Right.
So, you know, we talk about taking things in every night and why they leave the stuff out during the, you know...
Right, and that's where it needs to be differentiated, is what's decor? I mean, if it's tagged with a price, it's not decor. The other thing is, we talked, I think it was last year, about maybe having a permit required for these things, which would then, based on complaints, we could review and revoke. Is that still something we'd be interested in doing, even if it's a minimal annual permit that they apply for, saying, "We intend to do this"? And then that tells you very quickly, I mean, then they'd be educated, here's what's allowed, here's what's not, when they get their permit. It'll tell you real quick who's involved and who's not, and then if there's a series of complaints, it can be reviewed and then revoked accordingly. Even if it's $10 a year, I mean, it's a minimal cost.
Be a record of it.
Right. And then when they come get the permit, they're educated on, okay, this is what you're allowed to do and what you're not, and I'll be watching you, you know, that sort of a thing.
Would there be any issues with height? Suppose they put shelving outside for the weekend? I mean, are we concerned about safety?
I am.
I mean, shelving unit, you know, they, somebody could, they could tumble over, so do we want to...
We had proposed initially, anything over a certain height had to be secured.
But, yeah.
We getting deeper than what you...
Well, you see, but, I mean, that gets home to their liability, not ours, so...
And trying to look at it as a zoning law, you know, it's, you know, we're talking about, you know, distances, area, bulk, you know, things of that nature. I don't think we want to get in, with a zoning ordinance, I don't think we want to get into the, you know, the minutia of things like a building code compared to a zoning ordinance. You know, we approve a building to be built, we anticipate that it's going to meet all the safety requirements and so on that are administered by the county. I would expect anybody putting out merchandise to do it in a responsible manner, so that it's not going to, you know, blow out into the street in front of a car, or, you know, things of that nature. I don't think it's the city's responsibility to, you know, if we say, "You can put stuff out on the sidewalk," our job is to police that it's done according to the code, but I don't think the code needs to get into that level of detail. And again, you know, certainly Jay can weigh in on this, you know, when, after the ordinance is actually, well, he'll weigh in on it before it's actually introduced, because I'm going to talk to him about the changes. But certainly, we can try to work in a permit requirement, if that's the consensus, and...
That'd be a good idea. I think that's a good idea, maybe.
I don't.
You don't?
No, because they have to get a permit to be in the place. I mean, they got to get a license, so wouldn't that fall under their license?
Well, that's, that's, that's not really...
I'm not too sure I should say anything, because, you know, should I not abstain from making comments about this?
Just because you own a building, doesn't mean, doesn't mean, just because you own a mill, the building, you don't display merchandise.
Right, you're not the business owner, you're a property owner, that's a...
I don't want any of it downtown, so...
Well...
So where were we? Okay, we're talking about $10 fee or permit.
Right, a permit of some sort, I think.
Jim, how do you feel about it?
I feel like try to make it a little easier for the people downtown, then make it harder for them. Because with all the, trying to get businesses to come in and stay in, you kind of got to break your back a little bit to give them something to help them out. I don't know whether we need $10 fee or not.
Bobby, you have anything from the county? Any suggestions, or are you...
I think the discussion is, is right on point. I think the initial draft, the ordinance, has, you know, restricting the linear extension of outdoor merchandise and not blocking the sidewalk. Also like the idea of letting people try not having stuff out 24/7. I think it can be a positive, but if you're in the devil's in the details. And I think Jim makes a good point, so, you know, there's no guarantee that you're not going to have some business people that put up junk.
They're going to push the envelope, and...
And some will push the envelope.
Absolutely, and they're going to see where that line is. And the whole point of this, this is something where it can very easily get out of hand. That's why I'm thinking the permit process is going to help kind of key Jim in on where to look and where the problems could become. If you make this a free-for-all, it's going to get out of hand very quickly. I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt you. If you had some more, yep, yep.
So we go back to what Jim and Oliver were saying. If they have retailer's license...
Right.
They would restrict it to businesses, not anyone being able to do this.
Well, it would be businesses only.
Well, that's one...
I mean, it's merchandise.
I can see somebody, a sidewalk sale getting out of hand.
Well, they do it anyway.
Well...
I mean, they do their yard sales out on the sidewalk.
There's, right, I mean, there's nothing to stop someone who resides downtown from having a yard sale and putting a table out on the sidewalk. Now, they can't obstruct, you know, clear passage of the sidewalk, and there could be some ADA ramifications if somebody does, but it's really not something that's, you know, if somebody, if somebody sits a table this wide out in front of their downtown dwelling, I don't think they're violating any code to hold a yard sale and, you know, have part of it on a public sidewalk. Now, in a typical residential neighborhood where the sidewalks are only three or four feet wide, if you put a table on the sidewalk, now you've got a problem. So it's, you know, very situational in terms of that kind of activity. If a business wants to hold a sidewalk sale, there is actually an existing provision in the code for temporary uses that I can authorize a use that's not typically allowed within that zoning district. We have utilized that in the downtown district previously. A business that was here for a few years, Vintage Colors, would periodically hold, they called it an art experience, and part of that had some activities at a table out on the sidewalk. So he came in, applied for a temporary uses permit to be able to do an outdoor activity on the day that he had his art experience. They had different stations, and they would have kids come in and do different types of, different types of art, and some of it was rather, rather large area required and a little potentially messy, that they had plastic sheeting spread out and stuff, and they went through the process to get the temporary uses. So that same sort of thing could be done for a periodic event like a sidewalk sale or something. Or if it's under the auspices of Tawnytown Main Street, that's a city sanctioned group and events that, you know, if we were to have a downtown event, then part of it was going to be sidewalk sale, they wouldn't have to pull the permit, because it would be under the umbrella of Main Street. So there are opportunities there already, you know, provided by the code and our existing processes, in terms of like, you know, setting up a table with merchandise. It might be difficult getting people to get that temporary uses ahead of time. I think there's a learning curve involved there, but it's, it's... The fact that we've been talking about this for a number of years and haven't made any move on it, I think speaks to how challenging it is to be permissive, to, you know, help the businesses, but be cautious that we don't degrade the appearance of the downtown. And, you know, it may just be something that has a short-term risk, and if things really do take off and we start to get a different level of business downtown, you know, maybe that concern will resolve itself. But, you know, while we have, you know, secondhand shops and thrift shops and things that are essentially indoor flea markets, that's the kind of merchandise that is going to be set out on the sidewalk, and that's the, I guess, concern is what it looks like, so...
We seem to handle it okay when Henry Reindar used to put his lawn mowers and air conditioners out front, and then when Jim O'Brien had the...
The five and dime mowers did it too.
Was it the same, so we didn't have a big issue then, and I think they brought everything in every night.
They did.
I think a lot of the businesses will police each other in terms of junk. I mean, that's what I've seen when a business owner saw someone else putting out more junk than anything else, they went over and talked to them, and it kind of resolved it.
We've got one that really works hard at it, and they really do a good job.
Right, I mean, they, I talked to them, they value the privilege to have these things out, and they don't want to see other people abuse it and get it taken away. So I think you're going to see more of that, where the responsible business owners kind of step in and say, "Hey, you should really dress this up a little nicer."
Well, you're dealing with antiques, then you're leaning a little bit towards junky stuff and that sort of thing.
It's a little bit of the responsibility of the building owner also, too.
Yep.
Ma'am, I'm sorry to keep you waiting.
That's okay. Sharon Tillman, Georges on York, Tan York Street. As a new business owner in Tawnytown, I would caution against charging more money. We take many risks as business owners, and we are taking a risk on Tawnytown by coming here as well. And if we're asked as a community, as a business community, to start spending more money, especially when it's being nickelled and dimed from us, that sends a message, that's a negative message. I appreciate the discussion of wanting to have set guidelines and have, and I think that... I appreciate the discussion of wanting to have set guidelines and have, and I think that's very, the right thing to do is to have those guidelines and to have business owners follow those. Could it be a free permit that's offered with an educational piece rather than charging for it? So it's really, it's more of an honor system permit, if you will, rather than charging somebody money to be able to do something that's part of merchandising their business.
Right, I get what you're saying, but that suggestion came from business owners downtown, that it be a charged permit that they have to buy. And that's, that's why I brought it up that way. They said it doesn't have to be much, but just something where people have to show that they really want to do this.
I think if you can look at that as something that's negotiable at some point, you know.
If it's just a registered.
If it's just a registration, or maybe it's a one-time fee, something like that. I appreciate that point, too, that if you have a little skin in the game that you may be, you know, but it's, you know, the first thing, it's this ten dollar permit, and then what's the next thing that we can be charged to be able to do, and what's the next thing we can be charged to be able to do? And then sooner or later, you're spending a hundred dollars a year instead of ten. So I just want to caution about that. My other question as it relates to the outdoor dining, there may be times when we want to serve our guests their breakfast outside on the patio, once we get a patio approved, of course. You know, is this something that we would need to have that permit for because it would be an occasional thing? It would only happen in, you know, nice weather, but it would be more akin to having, you know, family, friends dining on the patio with you, just like any other residents on Main Street. So I'd like to hear a little bit more about the outdoor dining and the food service, and as it relates to potentially our own business of the bed and breakfast.
Then you're working.
I think bringing that back, that's where it comes back to the, to the commission here for approval.
Right, I think that would become part of.
You say it comes in damn.
George, hold on a minute.
Right, I think that would become part of the sketch site plan, you know, that the planning commission would approve. It would be a one-time thing, saying, you know, yep, this looks good, it's not going to, you know, the neighbors don't have to complain about it, it's not going to bother anybody. And then, you know, you're approved to use that area for however long you choose to. And that wouldn't necessarily be a permit, that would be very much like, like we do with the message board signs. You know, now, now they, they will still have to do a regular sign permit, but because it's a message board, they have to come and get your okay, and there's kind of a public vetting of it. I mean, you know, we see how concerned the community was about it, but they had an opportunity, at least. And kind of the same thing with the outdoor food service, that, you know, if, if the, and I'm just making something up, if the Country Kitchen wants to tear down the barn and build a patio, you know, they may, they may not have to do a site plan for it because there's no new impervious and things like that, but they would have to come to you in order to have food service on the patio. Now, they may also have to do things through the health department, but that would be above and beyond, you know, our purview. But once we said it's okay to use the patio, they'd be good. It would be part of their site plan, essentially.
Let's go back to the bed and breakfast, because that seems more realistic, that they would want to serve outside and also possibly may want to have a glass of wine.
Your vents or small vents or anything?
Before this would happen, then I think we should have, be a public hearing. Because you've got neighbors up there, so would that come back to us for approval with a public hearing? Because neighbors may not like to have the noise out back. I mean, you can't sit out back and not have a conversation without maybe offending someone. So how, would that work or not?
Well, I.
Or would you say not have a public hearing? I'm concerned about the neighbors.
I would.
And actually, we're.
I would not recommend an actual public hearing. I, I think that, that having.
Maybe posted.
Having it on the agenda, and maybe there should be a posting requirement so that the neighbors might be more aware if they're not paying attention to, you know, city business necessarily, because a lot of folks don't. You know, that may be something that would require a notice go, you know, in the front lawn or the front window or something like that. You know, that certainly could be an option. So we could, we could treat it more like a, you know, a regular site plan. I mean, not, not having an engineer draw it and everything like that, but process-wise, you know, it would go on the agenda, it would get posted, you know, the developer or property owner would have to post it on their lawn, you know, so.
Have you noticed that it's been under discussions at particular.
Right.
Community meetings.
Right.
Yes.
Provider.
Right, yeah, but I think an actual hearing is probably too, too much. Because that, that. That, I mean, typically, a hearing requires a publication of the hearing notice in a, you know, a newspaper, and now we're starting to talk about adding more money onto the process and.
Well, I can just see setting out back in a patio with a glass of wine, and next thing is going to be a fire pit. I mean.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, you know, it just keeps adding on and on here.
Like anyone else's backyard would have. And people gathering in a backyard like anyone else's backyard would have. Do other residents have to come and do, do this in order to sit in their backyards and have conversations and sit around fires?
I hope I do.
Because that's a precedent.
I think it's going to wait till four.
Precedent I don't know that you want to set, to be honest with you. I'm a little nervous about hearing what I'm hearing, because we're talking about a breakfast on a Saturday or a Sunday morning at nine in the morning after, you know, are there quiet hours in town? And I'm new to town, so I'm really asking this in a serious manner. Are there quiet hours? Are there hours in which people are not allowed, you know, shouldn't be working or making a lot of noise because it could affect their neighbors? You know, what are those types of town regulations so that we can be aware of them? And the evenings as well, so that if we do want to have our guests be able to sit outside and not be cooped up in the house because that's the only place we're allowed to keep our guests, well, then we're looking at a total game changer.
That's not what my intent was, to take away from anything.
Yeah.
Intent was just to bring it out and make it open for discussion.
We don't want to get too complicated.
No, we don't, but we don't want to take the rights away from other people, too.
It's not getting off topic, it's exactly on topic. I mean, we're talking about food service outside, that's what this whole, that's part of what's here. We're completely on topic. So I, I think maybe some of the provisions on food service are what is directly visible to the public and what is not. If they have people eating breakfast on the patio behind the building, that's not even visible to the public. Now, if a coffee shop sets up a couple two-tops in front of them on the sidewalk, that's a little bit different. But they're not going to be infringing on anyone's right-of-way, they're not impacting anything.
The, the point of having it in there was, was really just enabling language. Because right now, you just can't, period. Everything is supposed to be inside the building, end of story. That's the way the code is written now. And historically, it has been enforced at varying degrees, and typically, you know, it's, it's not enforced much, and then somebody goes and pushes too far, and then the reaction is everybody complains and there's a crackdown on it. And then, you know, that person, that business may go away, and you kind of start the cycle over again. So admittedly, I mean, since, since I've lived in town, I can, you know, name a number of businesses downtown, you know, long before I worked for the city, that displayed stuff outside. And I think the ordinance has been, had that within a building for a very long time. You know, so, so the point of having that food service piece was to enable some outdoor food service, whether it's in a little courtyard or, you know, a, say, say somebody does repurpose an existing building and, you know, turns it into an ice cream parlor or, you know, I don't know, something food-related, coffee shop. You know, and they might want to sit tables out on the porch, say it's a building that's got a nice front porch. You know, they can't, well, the porch might be a little gray because is that the building or not? Maybe that's not a good example, but, you know, the point of adding it is just to enable it to happen.
See, but that brings up something I was thinking while, while she was talking, was at what point is it not within? Yeah, and the porch is a fine example, is. My thought, especially on the dining, is if it infringes on the sidewalk, there should be an approval. If Country Kitchen builds a deck on the back, it's not infringing on anything. Those who live downtown, they should know that they're sharing this space with commercial enterprises and understand this is what happens in a mixed use. I think if it's infringing on the sidewalk, absolutely it should be approved. If it's not, and it's entirely within their property and not right in front of the public, I don't see that as, and you're giving me that look of, hmm.
No, I, I wish, I wish I could agree with you because that makes a lot of sense. Unfortunately, my experience dealing with complaints over the last several years tell me that not everyone is that reasonable.
I understand.
And, and I would like to avoid the situation where the city allowed this to happen, it wasn't like that when I moved next door, and now you allowed this to happen and my life is miserable. And I'm going to call you every other week because you're not fixing it. And you would be amazed at how many hours a week are spent on stuff like that around here. So it's, I would like to avoid that situation, and I think by having some kind of a, a public vetting of it that gives that person the opportunity to say, you know, you know, I don't want them to have, you know, a deck, a patio dining area or a deck dining area. And, you know, maybe you discard the concern, maybe it's, you know, just somebody that's going to complain about everything. I know we have folks like that, but.
And I think from a, from a standpoint of, it would have to be a public hearing. Because while Chairman Parker is really great at getting comment, he's not obligated to do so. And the next chairman may not accept public comment on those topics. They may say, it's in the open, it is what it is, we're done. If it's a public hearing, you're forcing future boards to actually accept comment from the public.
Chris, you had.
Yeah, I mean, my question is, how are, how are they, how are events at Antrim handled? Because we're talking about exactly what they do two or three times a weekend. And if there's no process that they need to go through, then there should be no process that we would have to go through.
Are they downtown?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they're, I mean, we were just over there last weekend, sitting at the bar, watching, you know, a hundred and fifty people at a wedding and making comments about dresses and tuxes, but that's another story. But they were, you know, but, and they do that two and three times a weekend. And they're, but they're within their compound, it's not visible, it's not infringing on the sidewalk, it's not, you don't see it driving down the street. So, you know, if there's no process for them, then there should be no process for us.
But you're not going to see most of what you do.
Right, exactly, you won't see, if we're doing that same thing, you will never see it.
And that was the point I was trying to make, is, you know, Antrim, who knows when they're having an event except when they start setting off fireworks at eleven o'clock at night? But other than that, you don't know.
I know when you have everything.
I hope you do, and I'll go over with a bucket of water and stop at one time. But if it's not infringing, it's a totally different animal.
But I do disagree with one thing you said, Tillman, that is, because one establishment has it, and they weren't required to provide supply and whatever that others should as well. Well, they're an established business, so whatever the rules were at the time that they established Bed and Breakfast, it was what it was, but the planning commission is considering opening it up even more. So this is the time to discuss whatever provisions, requirements, rights you want to require. So in that sense, I do disagree with one thing you said, but otherwise, it's, you're right. I mean, if it's, if it's in the back of the building and it's not infringing on the sidewalk or public right-of-way or whatever, then to what extent, how draconian should the requirements be? But I do also agree that having neighbor, neighbor input is, is, can be an important component of this as well. Give them a shot to express, you know, what their worries are, and maybe, you know, the planning commission could stipulate certain things like hours of operation.
I mean, I assume there are.
Cars shall not start before eight-thirty in the morning, or whatever.
I was going to say, I assume that there is, there is an operative noise ordinance in town?
Last call's eleven.
Yeah, there you go, right there with it. But I assume, is there an operative noise ordinance in town?
There is not.
There's not a noise ordinance.
Okay.
There is a, I mean, there's the public nuisance, if there's not a noise ordinance.
All right.
And so, you know, if something becomes a nuisance, then it's addressed.
Individually.
Individually by law enforcement as opposed to the city, as opposed to zoning, we'll say.
Yeah. You know, I guess, I guess the other, the other question in that is, is, has it become an issue to this point or are we trying to get ahead of an issue? You know what I mean?
Well, we're always trying to get ahead of something.
But, right, but are we, are we, are we creating an issue by getting, trying to get ahead of an issue?
We wouldn't be talking about this probably if you weren't putting a bid in direct consent.
No, my fault, I'm sorry, I take the blame.
So we're reacting.
But, and everything's a stepping stone, so when we're talking about allowing people to display merchandise outside, the logical next step is, I want to serve food outside then. It's merchandise, so we're just trying to make sure that we address it, it is a separate issue, but related.
Right.
So it's one of those, get it all done in one fell swoop, and then we can say, good or bad.
Fair enough.
Okay, so I think. There's one thing here to consider, too, the health department's involved in this all. So if a bed and breakfast is allowed to have cooked food on the inside of his house, you should be able to have it served on the outside of his house. It should be put together in one lump sum, it's hard enough to make money as it is.
Thank you.
And you start, you start working, this week you can, and this week you can't.
You get days like, you know, if, if, you know, a day like this morning, you know, where it was sixty-five degrees and sunny and no humidity and beautiful, absolutely, I want to be serving breakfast outside on a veranda somewhere.
And I'll bet you they'll serve it in a nice place.
Yes, it will.
I bet you the seats will be comfortable, might even have an arbor over it. It's not going to sit out on the corner.
No.
Just want to make that clear.
Yeah.
I carry that on my back deck all the time.
All right, Jim, let's, let's move in a direction here. What do you have so far from us to take to Jay?
Well, we were going to add that the outdoor displays of merchandise shall not include food. And I don't know if we want to specifically say food or consumables, I'm not certain if the definition of consumables.
Perishable is a key.
Right, right, but.
I think that's the main.
But I think the location where we were talking about eggs has in the past put other foods outside just for people to take.
It is right now.
So whether, whether that's been perishable items or not, I'm, I'm not sure, but.
That's a health department issue.
Maybe that should be a call to the health department.
I mean, am I wrong about that? If you're, you're giving out food, there should probably be a little bit of oversight there. That's actually a little terrifying to me.
I don't know if eggs have to be, if you're giving them away, did it have to be candel?
That's free.
Was it free?
But the egg don't end up on my buildings.
It seems to me, if it's your building, it needs to be called to the health department. Or come to the, come to the zone administrator and bring your complaint to him.
Or I have.
And let him call the health department.
Well, address food as it should be addressed.
Right, well, how Jay, what's your get at?
Have him legally use it.
And then you had a couple other things there.
And, well, we talked about there being a permit requirement or possibly some kind of registration with regard to the outdoor displays. I don't know if we had consensus on that, that sounded like we were split as far as moving in that direction.
Well, I'm still, I'm, and I can't remember her name.
Sharon.
Sharon said, even if it's a free, just a registration would give you a record of who's doing it. We don't have to charge you five bucks or ten bucks.
I agree.
Just a free registration. I mean, look what we go through for childcare in a residential area. And then once that happens, it's over with. Five years later, you don't know who's doing what because we didn't require a registration. Or an annual.
Does it say you had like an annual registration so that way you keep up with the?
Yeah, and if it's free, it's no big deal.
I think that's a good idea that everybody, whether it's permanent registration or whatever route you want to take with this, that it be an annual thing.
And if he had an issue with, with one particular person or vendor, then that's the time to talk to them, if you haven't already talked to them, saying, this is the issues we've had in the past year.
Right.
You need to address them before you, we reissue a. And you need to address them before you, we reissue a, something in that order, I'm sure Jay can...
Well, if you read the minutes from last month, which I brought along, Jim's got his, he's, he, he can see, and he knows what's going on, and says it right there.
But being able to do something.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, Jim.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to think through, from, I guess, an enforcement standpoint. You know, obviously, the more gray something is, the more difficult it is to enforce. So if, if the ordinance says, you know, "This long by this deep is what you can do," and somebody's staying within this long and this deep, but they're putting out trash or junk, what grounds do I have to go and say, you know, "Hey, your display looks like junk"?
Well, we're not talking about the display looking like junk, we're saying that they're not within the parameters that it's allowed.
Right.
If they're infringing on the sidewalk, if they're putting out too much stuff, if it's there all the time, all night long, revoke.
Or in unsafe manner, the way they're displaying it. All you need to show up is with your jacket, it's just caught blowing for you.
What does the registration get us that the, that the text itself doesn't? If, okay, if I...
It gives you the chance to give them the text saying, "These are the rules." Otherwise, they say, "I, I didn't know." I mean, when they come in for the permit, you say, "Okay, here's your permit, and here are the rules, and this is what will be enforced." If you rely on them to read it, they won't, they'll say, "I didn't get it," and then what are you gonna, right, so...
And that, that could certainly be incorporated for, um, you know, fortunately, you know, we're a small enough entity that it would not be a major effort to, you know, through our economic development office, you know, get the word out to the existing downtown businesses, you know, who are retailers, and say, you know, "Guess what, you're gonna be allowed to put stuff outside, but here's the rules on it." And then anyone else who comes in, I can have that conversation with them when they apply for their new business zoning certificate. I can make them aware of the limitations then, as part of that, um, you know, permitting process that they already have to go through, uh, for the new business. So I'm, I'm not sure if the, I, I, I think that's a, a, a good point, that yes, that gives an opportunity to get the rules out, but I think we can do that regardless, just by going, you know, to the, the businesses. Um, either myself or, or maybe Nancy, um, can, you know, basically just make the, make the rounds, and say, you know, "Here's what we're looking at." And, and certainly, as part of this ordinance process, we will make sure that the downtown businesses are aware that this is under discussion, um, so that they have an opportunity to voice their concerns or opinions about it as well. Um, and hopefully, you know, we can do that before we get to the point of a public hearing. So, you know, my intent is, after tonight, whatever the consensus is in terms of any modifications to this, um, once we get it ready for introduction, um, if, if you're comfortable with, you know, we'll agree on some language tonight, and then get it in the council packets for their July workshop. You know, we'll also take it to economic development and make sure Nancy has it to send out to all the downtown businesses, you know, so that they're aware of what we're discussing and the details of it as well. And I'm sure there, you know, there will be some support for it, and I'm sure there will be some people who are gonna say, "Well, I have a little storefront, you mean, I can only do so many feet?" And they won't be happy about it. And, um, you know, we'll just have to figure out what kinda compromise we can reach on it, I guess. But I guess getting back to the registration, um, I don't think it really gets us anything that we don't already have or can't do without that, that step.
I still really would like to have...
I think it should be.
I think, I think we need it. George, how do you feel?
It's kinda mixed up for me. I don't think it's, I think we need to take a look at it some more.
Okay. Well, I can talk to Jay about, um...
I think we should run it through by Jay and see...
Where we could, yeah, and, um, a permit requirement might go in a different section of the code. For, for what we drafted this time, this, this two oh five nineteen D, that's the area where we talk about setbacks and lot size and things like that, because it's, you know, it's dimensional, it's related to, you know, space and things of that nature. The permit would probably fall under another section, um, other than that nineteen D section, so... I'll talk to Jay, see what we can put together, and maybe we, maybe we need to bring it back to you next month, before it's...
Before it goes to the council.
Before it's introduced, okay.
Yes.
Okay, then we won't, we won't, um, we won't have it for introduction this, this coming month, then we'll put it back on the planning commission agenda first. So we'll add some kind of permit or registration requirement. Um, now, what about, what about, um, merchandise being out only during business hours for the business? Do we wanna add something like that?
I think so, yes.
It sounds better during business hours.
Posted business hours.
Yeah, we're talking about if it has a price tag on its merchandise.
Everything's for sale.
Right.
If it has a price tag on it, it's the issue.
Right, well, that's...
Okay, and just...
This ends awful quiet, you guys go on.
Now, now, with...
With everything so far, or what?
With, with that comment of, and, and I think it's accurate, "Everything's for sale." And, and again, thinking of, of, uh...
That's what we said, it's free.
Russ, who has some substantial...
Just registration, no, no fee.
Okay.
That's kinda what we agreed, Sharon brought that up, and I think it was a fine high, yeah.
So if I'm, you know, if I'm selling architectural salvage and things like, like they do across the street, and I've got a hundred and forty pound door, barn door out front, but there's no price tag on it, I don't have to move that inside every night?
I don't think I'd question it, so I wouldn't have to answer it.
So...
There again, if it's that, if it weighs that much, then it should be secured, that no one can get hurt.
That's what I was gonna say, that, that door has to be secured to the wall.
Yeah.
Because it's gonna get killed with a door like that falling on it.
Right, so it should, need to be secured somehow.
So we're starting, we're starting to get down that, down that slope again of, uh, of going beyond, you know, area dimension bulk?
See, but that, that can be area dimension bulk, that can be, it's over X height, it must be secured. It's no different than saying sixty percent of linear, it's, if it's over six feet, it needs to be secured. If it's a hundred and forty pound plank of wood, that should probably be secured. I mean, it's... You can, you can attach a number and say, "It must or must not."
I...
That's not really gray.
I think that, um, and, and again, I'll certainly defer to Jay on this, but I think rather than trying to address, you know, specifics like that, I think that adding some catch-all language, you know, about displays having to be, um, you know, uh...
Just have to be secured.
In a safe, you know, you know, all displays shall be...
They cannot pose a hazard to the public, right, I mean, there, there are things...
Dis- disclaimer language, essentially.
That's all we're really asking for.
Right, so I, I think something like that would be, you know, that puts the, the responsibility on the merchant, um, to make sure that their displays are set up in a safe manner, and it, I think, and again, you know, I'll defer to the city attorney on this, but I think that that kind of language puts less liability on the city than saying, "If it's over six feet tall, it has to be tethered at the top," because then, well, what if it was tethered and Augusta Wind yanks the tether out? You know, "Well, I did what the city said, the city didn't make me do enough, and it's the city's fault that blew and, you know, fell on the baby carriage." You know, I mean, it just goes on and on and on, so I think the more, you, you know...
Don't be hazardous, don't display ninja throwing stars on the sidewalk, that someone's gonna pick up and throw at somebody, I mean, it's...
Still looking at the health, safety, and welfare.
Right, right, so we'll, we'll add some catch-all language for that, that sort of stuff.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, and then, then item number eight, getting into the food service part. Still, um, the way you have it here, what, what did you add to what we have in front of us?
I didn't think we came to consensus on that yet, so I didn't, I don't have anything added to that yet.
Other than not a public hearing, but listed on the agenda, and, um, what we're gonna wanna use for posting?
It would have to be a public hearing. If you want public input, it would have to be a public hearing.
What if we just, what if it was just posted, like the bed and breakfast, there's a sign on there posted that, that, uh, it's gonna be on the agenda for the night? That's, that's not sufficient?
Well, what I said before was, you're really great about getting public input, but that's not a requirement of the board. So the next chair, the chair ten years from now, might not feel the same way. So being on the agenda is not gonna mean that they have input unless it's a public hearing. I'm just trying to think about the future a little bit, not everyone is as good as you are in that seat.
Talk to Jay about that, and, and let's get some input for Jay for the next meeting.
Right.
And the, again, the intent of doing it the way it's drafted here was basically to be the same process that we use for the message board signs. The reason that they come to you isn't because they're, you know, bigger, or they're gonna be closer to the road, or whatever. They come to you because they're potentially controversial. They, you know, they're something, people love them or people hate them. People might not wanna live next door to a, you know, constantly changing, essentially like somebody having a jumbo screen out your window. That's why we have a public process, why we have, you know, it published on the agenda, um, so that there's opportunity. Now, yes, somebody may not, you know, somebody might live next door to the Baptist church, who's outside of the city, you know, not pay any attention to the city agendas, and, you know, might, might call three weeks from now and complain, once the sign, I don't know how long it'll take to get the sign up, but, um, you know, somebody may call and complain and say, you know, "How come you didn't notify me?" You know, and, and I, but I don't think we wanna get into necessarily the expense of, like we would do for a board of appeals hearing either, where we censorify mail to everybody and things like that. I, at least I don't think we do, but maybe we do, it's really more up to you guys than me.
Okay, let's go with that.
I'd be curious to know how the city of Westminster addresses outdoor dining downtown. If you could get a copy of that, I'd be interested to see how they handle it. Cause I don't think it's anything special for them.
And actually, there's been a lot in the paper about the city of Frederick.
Yeah.
Check into that.
Check into that.
Yeah.
A year ago, I was a hundred percent opposed to outdoor dining downtown, I'm not opposed to it anymore. I, I think it should be allowed.
Right, and, right, and to do that, something needs to change in the code, so that's...
I, I agree.
So we can either make it, right, we can, we'll talk to Jay, I'll check out what Westminster does. I'm guessing Westminster probably doesn't have the blanket prohibition on outdoor uses like we do in their downtown district. Um, actually, I don't know if they have a specific downtown district, they might have, you know, business one, business two, business three, or something like that, yeah. Yeah. That's what I, I was thinking they had, a range, yeah.
Right, but you have, I mean, the area that has Raphael's, Johansson's, O'Lord's, that's really the area that...
I'll take a look online and follow up with staff at Westminster if I need to, to get some clarification on.
Okay.
Alright, so we'll have some stuff next month.
Jim, we still, still back to you.
Okay, um...
I think we're moving into the active, uh, projects.
Yep, okay, um... Let's see, Evapco, they've, um, they've already addressed many of the comments that were on the, uh, the copy of the comment letter that was in your packets. I have not been copied on a resubmit yet, I think they were waiting for, um, shoot, there was one. Let me see if I can find my copy of the letter here. I think there was a hydraulic question that they were still working on, but other than that, they were ready to, to resubmit to S H A. And, um, they did point out that the fact that the latest comment letter is talking about, um, upon receipt of the above items, they'll be in the position to process the permit, means that they're getting very close to satisfying S H A. Also, the, uh, the Mylars are, are making the, the rounds at the county, um, for recordation. Meads Crossing, um, we did, as you know, grant them final approval, the Mylars, the Platts are still circulating. Um, the construction Mylars have gone through the process and come back. The developer has shared some concerns with executing the public works agreement as part and parcel of their DARA. They've had the public works agreement for a number of years now, and, um, they have concerns with, with moving forward with it as, as it is, you know, in their, in their DARA packet. So, um, the mayor and council gave, pretty much gave direction last month that we were gonna hold our ground, and they were welcome to execute the public works agreement that was referenced in their DARA and has been for years. And so staff has not, um, we, we're waiting for direction otherwise, because if we don't have, you know, we don't wanna meet with them and negotiate something, if the mayor and council just said, "Well, they can sign what they've got." So we don't wanna be essentially contradicting what the mayor and council said at the last meeting, so that's kind of on hold right now. I suspect that Meads Crossing will probably be attending the next workshop, I'm guessing, um, to present their case to the mayor and council and ask for some compromise there. So we'll see what, we'll see what happens on that, but right now, it's kind of at, at a, at a standstill.
Okay, with that, at what point in time will they have to come back to us for an approval?
A, a year from when, um, well, the Mylars are signed, they, they need to have their grading permit within a year. If they've got their grading permit, we would consider construction to have started.
And when did, when did, when did the, when did we sign the Mylars? How long ago was that?
End of May.
Okay, so we've, we've got, we've got a ways to go then.
So, I mean, there, we can, we can probably argue it any number of ways in terms of the, uh, the date, if we're being generous, we'll, you know, we can say the last signature date on the Mylars or something like that. The, the lots were supposed to be recorded by the end of May. We, and that, that I believe is what's in the DARA, I don't have my Meads folder with me tonight. The city's stance on that was, they're in the recordation process, so we're not gonna hold their feet to the fire over, you know, a couple weeks. But now we've got this issue with the public works agreement. So they're not moving forward any, any, you know, at the moment with that, because they want to negotiate the public works agreement now. So, again, the city really is in the driver's seat on it. If the city wants to be strict and say, you know, we, we don't wanna negotiate, you know, that's up to the mayor and council. But I, I suspect there probably will be some negotiation. So we'll just have to wait and see what the mayor and council are willing to, you know, what concessions they're willing to make, and if they... you know, request anything in return this time, so we'll just kinda have to wait and see in July if, if, if it moves ahead. So, I mean, certainly, you know, if Meads Crossing wants to post the bond and sign the P W A tomorrow, things will get moving again. But I don't think that's likely to happen. So, so.
Well, here's, here's what I'm trying to figure out. We spent how many hours back with them negotiating this and that and this and that? So that when we left that room, it was ready to go? And then now, there's another problem? I mean, they, they grew frustrated with the city over what we wanted.
I think they really need to do something before, before they have to come back before us. We have some afterthoughts and concerns here on this side of the table.
Yeah.
I guarantee there's some, well, I, I better know.
We won't get into detail, but we have some, we have some concerns on this side of the table.
It's been happening since day one. They're at every meeting wanting something different.
They're gonna move forward with that. They need to make their mind up. That's right.
I, I suppose it would be appropriate to pass on to our, our liaison to council that the commission has concerns regarding further concessions.
Yes, yes, yes. Would you pass that on?
I would be happy to.
And, and, so, and we'll see. I mean, I, I don't know what case Meads is going to present, you know, they may have. I, I'm sure that part of it will be, well, here's how, you know, this other jurisdiction does it and here's how this jurisdiction does it. So, why can't you guys do it like that? And that, you know, that has been an approach used by developers more than once. So, we'll, we'll see. Meadowbrook, they've, they're continuing to pull permits at, you know, a decent pace, a couple a month. That's been what we've been seeing for the last couple of years. Meadowbrook, by the way, their Board of Appeals case, they did get approval for having a, a sign at the entrance to, at Deverne Street by the entrance for White Birch Estates. So, there will be a, right now, they're still putting out a temporary sign, which I'm allowing them to do since they got the approval to put a sign there. But there will be a, a more permanent, you know, semi-permanent sign going up in the near future. Let's see. Creekside, we've received sidewalk plans for the break iron street sidewalk. And today, revised plans for the sidewalk on one forty came in with some revisions per S H A comments. So, it's, uh, it's kind of.
It's progress, man.
It, it just, the sidewalks have just kinda taken on a life of their own. Now, now there is a Route one forty improvements plan for the sidewalk. So, and because, because it's in the state highway right of way. So, it's really all about the sidewalk still, but now it's a road, you know, now it's like essentially a, a road improvement plan is how it's being looked at by the state highway.
So they have to approve the sidewalk?
It's in their right of way.
Yeah.
So.
We'll be shelving snow before that happens.
So, um.
Well, they should have talked to the property owners and get that figured out, too.
They are addressing comments and going back to, you know, to state highway with, with the revisions, so I know they are working through that process. And I think they, the, the message that was sent by the Mayor and Council at the last, at last month's meeting with not reducing their surety because they haven't given us any visible progress, you know, may have sent the, the right message, so. So they seem to be pushing their engineer a little harder to, you know, respond to things and get things out more quickly than they had been before. Before it, our response from them was more like, well, we, we, you know, have C L S I working on it, I don't know why it's taking so long. Well, it's not taking so long anymore. So, they're at least getting comments addressed and getting, you know, resubmittals going. Carol Vista Phase Four, I think I might have mentioned this last month, but they have pulled all of their permits now. So at some point, we're gonna have to do, close out on them. Sheets, the only news I've got on them is that the, the pothole issue you guys brought up. It, it, I did hear back from Sheets that, that they're, they reviewed their lease and they're gonna take care of the pothole. I don't have an exact time for it, but I did, I did hear back from them that they, you know, went through, reviewed things and, and it sounds like they're responsible for taking care of that.
Is there any way that we're ever gonna be able to get a sidewalk from Antrim Boulevard to the shopping center, from either one of them, do you think? Because I walked up through there the other day and you walk in the middle of the road. I mean, there's none at Lorian, and there was supposed to be.
And that's, um, you know, we, we should have another bite at the apple when Lorian comes in to, to finish their assisted living, to do the other L shape, to make the, you know, to, to build out. And again, you know, circumstances have changed since the last Lorian plan was approved. So, you know, now Antrim Boulevard is a city street, not a county road. So, we have, we don't have to rely on the county to say, you know, a sidewalk's okay there, because the county didn't want the sidewalk. So, you know, we, we have, we'll have opportunity when they come back with their, with their next site plan to finish out the assisted living part. I don't know when that'll be. I'm sure they wanna be, you know, fully occupied and have demand before they spend any more money on it. But it might be a while, but we'll have another bite at it.
Is Lorian expanding their kitchen in the flick part? I keep hearing rumors about expanding the kitchen, that they're in the process of expanding the kitchen.
Making their room bigger.
Well, then they have to, that's expanding it, right?
Yeah, but.
So is that a construction type thing or what?
Nothing has crossed my desk on that.
I heard they were expanding their menu, but not the kitchen itself.
The kitchen's too small. They was talking about it, you know, some, some of the waitresses talking about it, but.
I would have to go back to the, I would have to go back to the site plan, but I think that, I think a kitchen, kitchen expansion from the original nursing home kitchen size was part of the site plan. Whether that happened at that point, I'm not sure. It might be a situation where, you know, it was on the site plan, but they've kinda drug their feet to actually do the physical improvements. I, I really don't know. That's the first I've heard about it tonight, so.
Well, if so, then a year's been up.
But, but, um, right.
Their restaurant has gotten a lot better and a lot, it's, it's, I mean, it's a hundred percent.
But I, I have not had any building permits come through from the county for a, you know, kitchen. To, to move walls or something like that would, would require a county building permit. To reconfigure kitchen equipment or maybe put in, you know, things that, that are better fit to allow them to do more. That wouldn't, that would be, you know, through the Health Department to regulate the equipment and, and things like that. But if they're physically expanding the square footage of the kitchen and, and have to move, you know, walls to do that, that would take a building permit and that would have to cross my desk, so that has not happened.
Sheets was the last thing?
Yep, and I did the agenda before I realized that this was the Maryland Municipal League Conference and that Jay would not be here. So we have a new legal report this evening.
Bobby?
I have nothing to report for this month as well.
Thank you. Other business, well, we already talked about the draft ordinance and discussion regarding the drive-through service at downtown business district. Before we get into that, are we here tonight to talk about the capital improvement program? And if we are, what is the purpose of the planning commission in this? Other than this complying with our master plan?
That's about it.
Thank you for bringing that up. There, the copies of the plan were there just for the members who had not received them previously. I expect that at a future meeting, Henry will make a presentation regarding the, the capital improvement program. In the past, the commission has had opportunity to comment on it, and I believe in the past we have also had, had commissioned action to, and I don't remember if it was to accept or to recommend to the Mayor and Council approval of the, the program. It's been a very long time since we've had a capital improvement program put together. Basically, when, you know, when money got tight and the city came to the realization that we really couldn't afford to take on any more debt to do any of these projects that were in there. The city manager at that point just stopped updating the plan, because we weren't getting the things that were already in there done. So he stopped adding anything new to it until we had, until the climate was a little bit better. So, I, I think we will probably end up making a recommendation at some point to the Mayor and Council, but.
We'll have that opportunity before the city council makes any action on it, right?
Yes.
I have not seen, I don't think we have a draft July agenda at this point, but I would, I would think that. No, it was handed out at the June workshop, was it, from Mayor and Council? So, I don't, I.
The council hasn't even gone through it as a group yet, and it was discussed there, I think I mentioned, and you had said about planning commission, looking through it before and making a recommendation one way or the other.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll make sure to follow up with Henry, make sure that, that you guys have that opportunity before it's on the council agenda for any formal action.
They should know to expect communication from us before they do anything.
Well, I have non-comment, but I'm not sure if they're related to planning zoning or as a citizen, so.
Next month, we'll talk about it.
And I think that, that per, for, for you as a body, your purview should be looking at it in terms of, do we have the right things addressed in this capital program to meet the goals and objectives of our comprehensive plan? You know, so that, that, that really would be your focus as a board now, as, as citizens or, you know, volunteers with different organizations, you know, you may have another perspective that you're looking at it with as well, which certainly can, you know, can come up, you know, whether it be.
You can give those to me or you can hopefully talk at a council meeting about it.
Well, I only had one that I think, as far as this commission here. And that, where I didn't find anything with storm management ponds or stormwater.
And that's a conversation that, that we actually had with folks from the Bureau, Bureau of Resource Management at the county, who we're, we're under, you may recall, we're under a joint N P D E S permit with the county now. And a lot of that is administered, administered through the Bureau of Resource Management. And we met with them, I guess, the week before last about a retrofit project here in town. And we talked about, Henry brought up, you know, the, the types of longevity that they're seeing for their ponds and, you know, what kind of capital program they, you know, have for, for their, you know, major pond projects. You know, certainly there will be retrofit projects in our future as part of our permit requirements. But things like, you know, cleaning out ponds, whether that would be more a maintenance line item or a capital expense.
Well, if you're talking about the liners, I, I guess our ponds have liners. If we're talking about the liners, then we're talking about some capital money.
Right, so.
And I, I couldn't find that anywhere.
Right, so that, that's something that, that Henry is aware of and, and I think, you know, at last, at, the last we talked about it, he was sort of trying to determine still whether that should be, whether that really belongs in the capital program or if there should be a, a stormwater category in our operating budget as, as a category that we put money aside every year to do certain levels of, you know, more than just mowing type maintenance, you know, whether it's going in cleaning out the bottom of a pond or, you know, farther down the road. Right, right now, we're looking at, at converting a couple ponds within the city to wet ponds, because we can get water quality credits to, you know, have, have a, a standing pool of water in, in the ponds that they, you get, you get settling of solids and things like that. And also some biological, you know, benefit of the, the different, I guess, the ecosystem that will result from that wet pond. Will also have some nutrient removal benefits, so that the effluent is gonna be cleaner than, than your typical, you know, bomb crater that we have now, where the water goes in and it goes out at however many, you know, gallons per minute after the rain event is over. So, right now, we're looking at wet ponds, so that would be a different type of maintenance than a dry pond with a filter media in it. But the county is seeing a lot of success with their retrofits where they have a, a filter media and they're using, like, green wood chips and the carbon from the wood chips decomposing attaches to something in the stormwater. I don't remember if it's the phosphorus or, I really shouldn't go there because I don't remember what it was, but it, it sounds really cool when you hear the county guy talk about it. But, but that media does have to be replaced periodically and, you know, the county is still learning, because this is something that they've, that really their stormwater guys have come up with. You know, and the state has been willing to let them try it as kind of a pilot, so it, it's potentially gonna be a new best management practice in the, the state manual. So that's, that's really cool that Carroll County is coming up with these things, but, but again, it's, it's a long-term maintenance thing and it's not, you know, it's not just a couple thousand dollars to go in and clean out the bottom and put new filter media in and reseed it and things like that, so. Again, whether it's gonna be in the C I P or an operating budget item, we're not sure yet, but that's, that's interesting that you brought that up, because that was a question that came up a couple of weeks ago.
It was better reading than some of the literature what he had to read in the past. No offense, Bobby. All right. Do we really have time and wanna get into the drive-through downtown businesses tonight?
I think we have time.
Okay, then let's start it off. Jim, you wanna start off on that or?
Well, I.
I think I'm the one that started the troubles.
I put it on here just because I don't wanna lose sight of it, because we did say we were gonna talk about it when we could and it just seems like the last couple of months, we've been running a little long and we haven't had time to, so.
I think the, the original idea that I think I had mentioned, and I'm still wanting to propose, is to allow drive-throughs at downtown businesses if they fit certain criteria. Criteria that I came up with was property was over an acre in size and had access on two separate streets. I think they should be streets that are delineated in lanes, we'll say. That way you can't use an alley.
Like the Creamery Alley.
Right, I mean, that wouldn't really qualify, but if you look at the bank, which just would then make the bank a conforming property again. The old Sheetz property would qualify. And there's really very few others. The only thing I think we should consider is, what if someone comes in and buys four adjacent properties, tears them down and wants to put in Taco Bell? How do we address that?
What's, is that a street or an alley that runs parallel to East Bomer Street?
Alley.
That's an alley.
Warehouse alley. Yeah.
Pardon me?
Warehouse alley.
Warehouse, okay, I can remember what that was.
Say, if there's a way we can specify that the streets that they have access to have lanes that are specified by center line or something to that effect, that way they're legitimate streets.
I did, um.
I'm sorry? That's.
Yeah, I did bring up the, the concern about properties being consolidated. You know, just because we have seen that i- in, in the city before, so we know it does, you know, if, if the dollars work, it can happen. And we talked a little bit about the idea of, I, I had thought that maybe, you know, it, we could say something like, you know, properties of at least one acre as of the date of the ordinance or some, some, something. But Jay kinda shot that idea down for me, so, so that, that's something I think we need to kinda figure out how to make sure that we don't. that we don't, you know, again, if, if the numbers work, there's, you know, not going to be anything to stop somebody from coming in, buying up, you know, a couple properties and, you know, consolidating, you know, two or three lots to get their acre, and, you know, knocking down buildings and putting up whatever, you know, it might be.
Right, my goal is to make this as specific as humanly possible that it will only apply to a handful of places.
Was that a and or and or?
And.
So, you'd have to have both?
They have to be at least an acre, and they would have to have access on two, I'll call it legitimate streets.
How about if you make them access on two legitimate streets?
That's the.
It's, it's, again, it's kind of.
The property itself has to, you can't say fronts, but has direct egress to, I mean.
Why do you say that? Because, and I don't, I wouldn't want to see a Taco Bell out here on East, on East Ballmer Street if someone would buy three or four lots.
Right.
But if they would, you would have enough room for a drive-through with, with an acre a lot and come back on one for you again, that wouldn't be any different than a residence with driveway. I'll come back to you in a minute, Chris.
Tear down a residence and do the same thing in the residential area.
Otis owner, he's now is trying to buy a lot of property in town to put a place out.
What's that?
Otis, they're calling everyone.
My question was to you.
Was to why? Well, the existing places with interest to have a drive-through, it would help flow of traffic if you require that. Whether they use both, that's different, but they have to have access to both. The old Sheets property, they're going to have a hard time using East Baltimore Street as their entrance and exit and have a drive-through, but fortunately for that property, it has a dog leg that extends out, that could work.
But there's a couple lots, or at least two lots going out East Ballmer Street, that if someone would buy a couple of those, they would have room to put a restaurant or something in there with a drive-through and come, go in and back out a different location within that same.
Right, but the idea is, we don't want.
We don't want that.
A lot of drive-throughs, so if we make it, it's only these, you're going to prevent that from happening, which means we're going to prevent having six drive-throughs running up East Baltimore Street.
Okay, you're saying we don't want drive-throughs?
I don't want to, I don't want to overrun with drive-throughs.
Saying as like restaurants or drive-through, some other type of business that would have two means of in and out.
Right.
I can see Sheets.
I'm saying drive-throughs in general.
Because a pharmacy could go in.
Right.
And they have drive-throughs.
I agree.
CVS got a drive-through.
Right.
Right.
And it's possible, it's possible if the post office would ever want to move or build.
Right.
They would, could possibly have a drive-through. So, I'm, I'm questioning why, is it just because you don't want a restaurant, or you just don't want drive-throughs?
I think for downtown, we should limit the drive-throughs. We have, we have general business.
You're talking about downtown.
Yeah, that's what this is all about.
So, so we're not, so we're not talking, well, downtown stops at.
Just past the Sheets, the old Sheet.
Yeah, but the doctor's office or the dentist's office is not downtown.
That's right, it, it stops on that side of the road, it stops at the former Sheets site.
Right.
And on the opposite side of the road, it stops at Broad Street.
Right. This is all just downtown.
Okay, then right across the street is Subway or an Exxon.
Right.
And they have a street, what's the, the street?
Legion, that, that's an alley, but, right, Legion Alley.
So, that, that doesn't have lines on it.
Correct.
So, that wouldn't be eligible.
That wouldn't be eligible, correct.
But yet, that would be an ideal spot.
That would be, right, that's why you lean with.
So, I, I was just questioning.
Right, my, my point is, we need to find specific things we can base it on. If you say you could do this alley but not that alley, if you say a street or an alley, well, then you, you could have it down here.
So, why don't I say a twenty foot, twenty foot, what's our, what's our basic alley that we allow that's going in these developments, streets?
Sorry, in light of, in light of recent events with Mead's Crossing, I guess, I'm hesitant to say.
Mead Crossing, I don't want to hear.
So, because apparently it's.
Just forget I asked that question, Chris?
I'll, I'll be just, in that regard, I would say the twenty-four feet because that's two standard road lanes, is twelve-foot lanes, so twenty-four feet would be, would be like a minimum width that you would say if you wanted to, I mean, I understand the councilman's point about wanting to keep, if, if, if you don't, if you say that they have to have, you know, egressed onto at least two streets, that keeps them out of most places in town with very few exceptions, which I can understand because if you want to try to maintain the character of what you have downtown, a Taco Bell is not what you want to see. But by the same token, it's not just a restaurant, it could be a bank, it could be a pharmacy, but the way that, I think the way that you are approaching that is the right way because then that, that does limit it to someplace that can handle the traffic already.
Right.
And I think that that's probably a greater concern than anything else because, you know, I've had, you know, I've been here a couple of months and I've had enough attempts at head-on collisions at the bridge at Roberts Mill, so, you know, this, you get away from Baltimore Street and York Street and Frederick Street and it gets real narrow.
You're on your own at that point, yeah.
Okay. So, where are we at?
Where are you? I know where I am. Those are the provisions that I came up with.
How many of our streets or alleys are twenty-four feet?
I mean, most, most alleys in the city are not.
I was measuring sidewalks the past two days, I didn't measure streets.
My experience is not many of them.
Yeah, most, most of the alleys are much narrower than that.
That's right.
You know, most, most of.
They make them twenty-four, so you can't get that one.
I think we should base it on Trevanion and East Baltimore, and whatever the smallest of those two width-wise should be what it's based on personally.
And you're talking downtown?
Can we get a drive-through?
This is all downtown business district, yes.
Could you get a drive-through? You, you could get a drive-through.
Restricted. He can't, he's only got one street.
I know, well.
Where are you talking about?
It's restricted to business anyway. I know.
Because that alley, well.
He's not downtown.
You even got a paper alley behind you too. And actually, you couldn't do anything to your business, place a business as a drive-through because you only have one, one roof.
Well, again, we're just talking about downtown.
Actually, Ali, Ali could.
How could Ali?
I don't know if Ali's got an acre or not, but.
I got two acres.
Where's that?
Ali's general business, so he could do that now.
Well, right.
He could, you could, you could sell tomorrow to Taco Bell or KFC or whoever, you know.
That's what I was saying, you know.
And, and.
Otis owner is trying to buy right now. It's Murrin's, Murrin Drive, is what I was thinking. There's East Ballmer Street, there's Subway, Murrin Drive is the.
But there's no downtown out there.
We're out of downtown, right.
Right.
We're out of downtown.
But the next commission could change that to residential area.
Right, right, right.
Potentially, but, uh-oh, oh, boy.
Are we, go ahead, Bobby.
She even stood up for this one.
Yeah, I really urge the planning commission members to think this through very carefully. I do have concerns about this. I was curious to know what your comprehensive plan says about walkability and pedestrian safety and so forth, and there are numerous pages, I won't go through them, but there are numerous, numerous areas in your comp plan that talks about walkability, connecting residential neighborhoods to your downtown. It mentions pedestrian, that it's important that pedestrians feel safe and secure. And I agree with all of that, and I think it's important for every municipality's downtown to be walkable. And to be walkable, pedestrians really do need to feel safe and secure. And one of the things that makes them feel unsafe and insecure is points of conflict, conflict between vehicles and pedestrians. You'll have, the main types of, or areas of points of conflict are your side streets that intersect and disrupt the, the sidewalk, obviously driveways and drive-throughs. Now, someone mentioned, there are a number of individual residential driveways along Baltimore Street, and that's very true, in fact, there's a stretch where it's driveway, 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 driveway. But a, a drive-through of a commercial establishment carries a whole lot more traffic than a residential driveway does. I would urge you to consider prohibiting, in the downtown, and I'm talking the downtown area, prohibiting commercial drive-throughs along your, your main streets, and that's, that's basically Baltimore Street, Frederick and New York Streets. If, if a business wants a drive-through, have them put it along a side street, or if there's a alley in the back of their establishment off of the alley, but stay off your main street. I am very concerned that allowing drive-throughs on your main streets, and again, that's Baltimore Street, Frederick and New York Streets, in your downtown area will have unforeseen negative consequences.
So, aren't you forcing more traffic then off your main street to your side streets to go through the drive-through, which is more of a hazard?
I'm seeing, i- i- if, if, if the drive-through is properly designed, it should be safe, but you're going to have more pedestrian traffic along your sidewalk on your main streets, and much less so on your side streets. I'm more concerned that people walking up and down your main street, going to different establishments, I mean, you want to bring people to your downtown, you want them to shop and use services and so forth, but they need to feel safe and secure, and the fewer points where they could be run over by a vehicle, the better. And to introduce additional points of, of conflict along your main streets, I think, I think is a bad idea. So, I urge you to think through very carefully on where these drive-throughs would be allowed and how that's going to affect the walkability of your downtown area.
Counter, what you're thinking originally.
Well, I, I mean, really, it, it comes down to, we have, you know, one property that's hopefully going to be redeveloped, you know, in the not-too-distant future, and a number of, you know, and it, and it potentially lends itself well to something that could have drive-through service. It's unlike other downtown properties, you know, it is perhaps not unique, but it is not the typical downtown property. But I know we've been kind of dancing around this, really because there's one property that, you know, we've had proposals for different things that would have drive-through service, and it happens to be downtown. And, you know, it had a non-conforming use on there for years, and, you know, the former tenant obviously was very savvy in keeping their lease going for more than a year after they closed the business so that non-conforming use expired. You know, they certainly knew what they were doing, but, you know, I, I would certainly agree with Bobby that, you know, if, if we do make a move, that we really need to think through the potential, you know, what we're opening the door for, and, you know, even with the idea of, you know, having frontage on two streets, I mean, that, you know, that tailors it, for what we know now, that tailors it to a very few number of properties, but should we move forward with our urban mix, you know, land use and actually come up with some zoning text to support that, Warehouse Alley could become a street, and, you know, that would then put a lot of properties in the downtown area at risk, you know, for demolition and redevelopment, which I think is contrary to the city's goals for, you know, making downtown, you know, trying to build it into, to a destination and a pedestrian-friendly environment, so, it, it's, it's very, very difficult. I, I almost would lean towards, you know, looking at that, those few properties as candidates for rezoning in our next comprehensive plan update, which hopefully one of these days we'll get back to doing chapter by chapter, as we had started a while ago. Yet, the zoning code was amended to take those uses away from the downtown after we had two gas stations locate there, so the intent was to say, we don't want this anymore, this was a mistake, you know, that's not what we want in this part of the city, and now, you know, it, it's a.
It's creeping back.
I, I understand, I understand it's difficult to say no to a prospective business that wants to locate, you know, in the core of the, the city, but again, it's kind of flip-flopping a little bit, you know, years ago, it was decided, you know, we, we want to keep the walkability, we want to try to, you know, preserve what we have and hopefully enhance it, and, and not see, you know, demolition and redevelopment of the stuff in the historic district, and, you know, you kind of, as I said, you know, my, my understanding is that, you know, Exxon and Sheets, once they were up, are kind of looked at as being, you know, something you really don't want in, you know, right there at the edge of downtown. So that, you know, that was a conscious decision years ago to eliminate the gas stations, eliminate the drive-throughs, so it's, I, I just think, you know, any change, we really need to think through a lot of the what-ifs, you know, as we go forward, and, and there, there might be something that we can do to figure it out and, and, you know, and limit it, but I, I, I'm not sure what that's going to be, so, you know, and if, maybe, maybe we'll dodge the bullet and, you know, something that fits, you know, we'll redevelop the site and, you know, but, but it'll probably come up again years down the road.
But either way, we've still got the bank.
Right, right, and, and that, and that can continue as long as, you know, as long as they want it to.
It's an established business.
Right, right, and as long as they continue to have drive-through banking lanes, they can do that, that's fine. You know, now, if they close up and they close the ATM that's in there as well this time, you know, which is how the former bank was able to continue it, was the, you know, they kept the, they apparently kept the drive-through window open after the branch itself had closed, and then they kept the ATM lane, you know, open for a very long time, so they didn't have that year between, you know, that year lapsed before New Windsor moved in. So, but, but again, you know, it, certainly amending the code would make that a, a conforming use potentially rather than a non-conforming use, but there's no threat to, you know, New Windsor Bank that they're going to lose it as long as they continue to use it. So, it, it's, it's a toughie.
Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion that perhaps something to do before your next meeting would be, it probably wouldn't be very hard to do, but on the councilman's idea of at least two streets of a certain minimum width, that you kind of make a map of where properties might be that would fit that, so that you would have, and, and maybe even where properties, where two or three could be gathered together, you know, would, would fit that, so that you have an idea of exactly where you're talking about, moving forward with it, so you'd have, you know what I mean, you'd have a little bit more intelligent conversation about it, you know, and, and same thing applying to the, the Creamery property where Warehouse Lane, maybe a certain section of Warehouse Lane would be improvable to a point to allow something to go on there so that you can get rid of the eyesore.
That would help me. Well, the Creamery's going to be a parking lot for the new, for the addition to the police station.
I hope so. That's what I want to see happen to.
That's what's in here.
I want to see something for a city.
We bought hundreds, quite a good sized building, anyway.
I think the fire department needs to practice their firefighting skills on that Creamery building.
Too many brick.
I was always hoping that they'd make it something in the maintenance department.
I'm not, I'm not sure why the, the police station was, was designed so that a second floor could be added to it, that it would require an elevator, but there's a space that was sort of reserved for that, so I, I'm not sure why the increased footprint and then adding more impervious is the way, you know, that, that, that we're going on that one, but I think that's what the chief wanted, so, I don't know, so, we'll see.
Anyway, food for thought, I mean, it's, I want to give you all the ideas to look at, go measure, go research, but, I mean, we've got, you know how it is now, people want to come to Tawny Town, and somehow we're not business friendly, you have residents in town who want to see certain types of businesses, and I don't think they're wrong in wanting them, I think there are little things we can do. there are little things we can do, and to me, this is a fairly little thing we can do.
People's felt that way for a lot of years.
I understand.
All right, so, we'll put that back on the agenda for next month. We'll drive through different areas, see what streets are at least close to 24 feet. So, if they have two lanes, it must be 24 feet, right?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Yeah.
The, the, I believe that the Ashtoe standard for having lines down the middle of the road is at least two nine-foot lanes, a standard Ashtoe's highway lane is 12 feet, and if you wanted to have lanes in parking, then you're looking at 12 feet, you know, a lot of these alleys aren't 15.
There are even some public roads and.
Okay.
Better 24 feet wide, so low, low speed and looking back.
I'll bring some more information next month and we can discuss a little further.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Jim, you have anything else, anything as staff?
Just flip back to my report and make sure I touched on everything. That's, we do have a couple, the hearing hasn't been set yet, but we do have a couple, a variance request coming up and also a special exception, the special exception is for family daycare in the Meadowbrook community, and there's an application in for a, a larger-than-permitted sign at Lorian on Antrim Boulevard, so they are interested in taking down the existing, the existing signs, the existing freestanding signs and replacing them with one large sign, which will also include a message board section.
Look what we've opened up now with those message boards.
George, do you have anything?
Vegas, here we come. I have nothing, sir.
We're going to get the Chinese restaurant there cleaned up, I guess you heard Keith Reed bought it.
Is there a timeline at all?
What's it going to convert it to?
He's going to gut it and redrywall everything and hope to put, get someone with a pub or something like that in there.
Do anything with the upstairs, or just?
He's just going to drywall it and put it back and see what he can do after he gets it inside and out fixed up and at least make it look like something.
Good, good. Jim?
Yeah?
Nothing. Anybody from the floor, anything? Okay, it looks like the next meeting would be July 31st.
Yep.
So, with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second, in favor?
I'm.
Carrie.
Thank you.
Yes. 24 sheet.
Yep. You too. I think, yeah, if I remember, I dropped off the actual application a while ago, so.
Want to.
So.